Alright, up there we go. Okay, uh, counsel, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure, thank you, and hello, everyone. Councilwoman Farid.
She will not be joining us this evening.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Hairston. Thank you. Councilman Herring.
Here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
Thanks, and President Curtis.
Here.
We have six in attendance.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some of.
Moved by Councilman Ferguson second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hairston. Discussion?
Yes, Council President, may I?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Farid, who we all know is unable to make it, she's asked to, she asked to see if we can table the return um, in-person topic that she had asked to be placed on there. We can table this, and she can't be here.
Alright, we will table that. Anyone else?
Um, yes, Mr. President, question.
Yes, sir.
So, I thought we had legislation on this agenda.
Uh, I was going to talk on that. It, I omitted it, uh, from the agenda. Uh, it was posted, um, but I was gonna add it to this agenda. Councilman Hair.
Okay.
Did, did you, um, I'm sorry, what's your question with that? Did you want it on it, or?
Uh, honestly, I really think it shouldn't be on there, but, um, I mean, I brought my thing up before about, um, introduction of legislation at the work session, but we can, we can move forward. I'll talk to you about it later.
Okay.
We can talk it offline, alright.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and so, with that, I did want to add the, um, legislation for, um, the signage, on the agenda. Uh, it was on the website, uh, but we did not put it on the agenda, so I would like to add it to this agenda to vote on it. Any other discussion? Alright, uh, Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call to accept the agenda, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Hair.
Staying.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilwoman Jones. Uh, Vice President Ferguson.
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, President Curtis.
Yes.
Um, should we just pass on Ms. Jones right now, since she's having audio issues?
Uh, if, if no other councilman.
Thank you so much, um, Councilwoman Jones. Okay, so we have, uh, five yeses, one abstain. This is passed.
Thank you. Uh, and I will, uh, move the, um, okay, well, that's. I'll move the, um, the vote on resolution now, uh, so we won't forget about it. Um, so do I have a motion to bring forth the resolution for the, uh, Resolution R ten twenty twenty-two for the signage for the, um, council. I have a motion to bring that to the floor. I motion it as the first. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Jones. Any discussion?
Was the, uh, resolution? Was it corrected?
Yes, and it's been, it was posted, the correct version was posted on the website. And we'll read it before we, you know, officially vote on it. So, you can see. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the, uh, resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution R dash ten dash two thousand twenty introduced by Derek D. Curtis, Council President, co-sponsors at the request of the administration, session, regular work session, date of introduction, December the sixth, two thousand twenty-one. This is a resolution to authorize the purchase of three sandwich boards and the replacement meeting inserts for six sandwich boards, whereas the city of Glenard in Maryland holds regular legislative meetings to conduct this city's business and keep the citizens informed of legislative, administrative, and financial matters involving the city, and whereas it is the city council's responsibility to announce all meetings, agendas, legislation, and legislation to the public with, um, at least, uh, I'm sorry. Whereas it is the city council's responsibility to announce all public meetings, agendas, and legislation to the public at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting via cable station, website, marquee, and meeting sandwich boards, and whereas the city of Glenard already has an established relationship with vendor Signorama, and it is in the best interest of the city to continue doing business with said vendor to procure the updated signage and replacement PVC inserts, and whereas the council appropriated funds for the purchase of three sandwich boards and replacement meeting inserts for six sandwich boards in the FY twenty-two bu- budget and public works repairs and maintenance street account number ten dash sixty dash sixty dash seventy-three eleven, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Glenard in Maryland sitting in work session. Uh, I'm sorry, regular session, sorry, I'll correct that. Um, this thirteen day of December two thousand twenty-one that one, the mayor or the council president be and is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Signorama of Laurel Incorporated for the purchase of three new large billboard A-frame sandwich boards and replacement of the PVC inserts for six large billboard A-frame sandwich boards for twelve thousand one hundred fifty dollars, provided that the authorization to enter into said agreement be and is hereby contingent upon the city council's authorization, and two, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, can you re, uh, do the roll call on the vote for this legislation?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, if there's no more discussion, because I opened it up, but anyone wants to discuss? Okay, Madam Clerk, you can proceed.
Sure. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Pass.
Okay. Councilman Hairston.
Abstain.
Okay, uh, Councilman Herring.
Staying.
Councilwoman Jones.
I'm sorry, yes.
Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
Uh, President Curtis.
Yes.
Um, should I go back to Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Sure, so if I'm reading the resolution correctly, it's coming out of the public works budget, correct? The line item. And, uh, and so, the reason why I hesitated initially is because it is, you know, I, I never expected sandwich boards to be that expensive, but it, there has been an outcry for new sandwich boards, so I will say yes, but I just, I'll just say yes, just to keep it moving.
Okay, thank you. We have, uh, four yes, two abstain. Uh, this is passed.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, uh, next agenda is, uh, vote to approve the minutes. Uh, the minutes have been posted. Uh, there were, it was only one comment last meeting, uh, uh, by Councilwoman Farid, I believe, uh, about some edits that were made. Um, and now we are going to, uh, vote to, um, accept the meetings, uh, the minutes from July the first all the way through, uh, October the seventh. So, do I have a motion, um, to accept these, uh, approved minutes? So moved by Guillaume, second.
Second.
Second by Council, uh, Man Hairston. Uh, discussion? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, can you do the roll call to, uh, approve the minutes, please?
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
President Curtis.
Yes.
We have six yeses. This is passed.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to administrative reports. Uh, let me see. Is, so I know that the mayor was able to provide, uh, the mayor report last time, uh, and we did not have the treasurer or the chief of police read his report, so I would like, uh, for the treasurer report to be read, and the chief of police report to be read, uh, and Mayor Cross, if there's anything, uh, additional um, that you did not cover last time, um, then you can add that to, uh, your, your overall highlight, uh, for your report. Mayor Cross, do you know if Mr. Stewart is here?
Hello?
Ah, there we go.
Yes, he's here.
I was looking for your name and didn't see it, sorry. Just oversight. Uh, so we'll, we'll start with you, um. Uh, Mr. Stewart, could you please give the treasurer's report?
Thank you, um, President, uh, Curtis. Um, this is the treasurer's report for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. We would look at revenue and expenses for the month ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Stewart, do you, uh, do you have the, uh, financials with you that you can share?
No, I have, I had sent the financials to each of the members.
Okay. I just move, moving forward, when you do your presentation, can you have a, a visual presentation so that the, um, citizens can follow with us, please?
Definitely will do.
Thank you.
But this is a summary of the financials, and, um, there are copies for residents, and anyone who needs a copy, um, I will have that emailed to you. Uh, all you need to do is request, and we'll have that sent to you.
Okay, you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, the total revenues up to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one was four million one thirty-four thousand one thirty-five. Total expenses were one million four thirty-one eight seventy-one. In this case, revenue have exceeded expenditures by two million seven oh two two sixty-four. Of this amount, we still have to take into consideration the ARP funds, which was two million one sixty-two thousand. That would leave us with operating funds, our surpluses, still having revenues over expenditures of five hundred and forty thousand. As this is moving to the first month of the second quarter for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, installment receipts for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, real estate property tax are increasing. As in previous years, majority of the collections for real property tax will be received in the next couple of months. In a subsequent review for real property tax, November had collections of one million and nine thousand five ninety-seven.
One second, uh, Mr. Stewart. Councilman Jones, can you enable me to be able to share? I have it, uh, history, uh, report of, and I'd like to share it with the uh, citizens. I can't hear you.
That feature is there for you to use.
Okay.
But, um, I might, me and, uh, the webmaster, uh, went on to put this meeting on, uh, live YouTube, so that's why we're experiencing some problems with my, uh, hearing, and I'm not sure, you can try to share it, and let's see what happens.
It says the host disabled participant screen sharing.
Yeah, screen share is, is there for you to use.
Yeah, it's disabled.
Yeah, it may be because I'm using this, I'm streaming this on that, uh, YouTube Live.
Alright, sorry, Mr. Stewart, I tried to give, be your, uh, give you some help here with the visuals, but you can, you can move forward.
Definitely, definitely. Okay, so, um, at the end of October twenty twenty-one, collections for general funds was one million seven thirty-three thousand two eighty-three. Of this amount, total taxes, or total local taxes was one million five sixty-three thousand. License and permits was twenty-five thousand six eighty-one. State grant was seventy-three thousand nine thirty-six. All the financial sources, we got seventy thousand four fifty-eight. For cash updates, our current bank balances as of November tw- nineteen twenty twenty-one, which is when I prepared the report, our main operating account had nine million three sixty-three thousand three eighty-one. Forbearance account had seven thousand one oh three. The gold room account has one hundred and eight thousand nine sixty-five. Block grant had four thousand. Cable PEG grant account had two mil- of, uh, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine eighteen. To date, the city's cash balance remains sufficient to pay all outstanding bills as they become due. We want to speak about the ARP funds, and the most important part that I want to address is the fact that the ARP stated that we, the city, has reduction in their revenue due to COVID-nineteen shutdowns. We may be able to recover some of the shortfalls, and this is especially with the gold room. So, we'll be looking at the gold room, looking at the period, like, for three years to see how well they were doing, and then we will, um, make a, a, a request to use those funds from the ARP to cover or to recover those losses. The bank loan, as of November nineteenth, the balance was two thousand and seventy-nine dollars, representing the last month of, um, payment for December. I can tell you that as of today, that loan has been satisfied and paid in full. The audit for year twenty twenty-one, the auditors have contacted me after corresponding with them, where they brought to my attention that they were actually having staff in issues, short staff in most cases, which has caused the audit to be, um, to be dragged out in some senses. Um, given that, I requested an extension to submit the twenty, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit um, from the Department of Legislation, Legislative Service, which they have given us until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to, to submit. Um, tomorrow, I will be speaking, or I will try to get through to the auditors to find out what is the, what is our progress on these reports, because we need to get them done before that date, so that we could do our submissions.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
There's one more thing I wanted to talk about.
Okay.
It's about the gold room. Um, if, if, if anyone could see the report, you would see that for the month of October specifically, the gold room had made a surplus, a surplus of two thousand and ninety-three dollars. Um, the revenue for the gold room was seven thousand four oh one, which was, uh, a few specific programs or events that were kept there, and they bumped up the gold room in a position where it made a, a surplus, which I was really happy about, and I hope we could continue this now. There are a few people that I must thank for that specifically, and one, I would say, is Councilwoman Gillian for her push to keep a program there, which really brought in some funds for us. And, um, the, the church, I can't remember the name of that church now, but they have been continuously supporting the gold room, and, um, I would encourage everyone to use the gold room and let it be, um, sustainable to support, um, the citizens of Glenard. And that's your report for the church.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, I appreciate that. Uh, Attorney Chief Jackson, the chief's report, please.
Yes, good evening, how you doing?
Good evening, I'm well, how are you?
I'm fine. Hi, anything in general you, you like to hear? On my report?
Uh, yes, the copy is online, if you just wanna briefly go through it, that's, you know, for the citizens' awareness, that's great.
Alright. Back in October on the twenty-third, uh, the officers provided, uh, extra police presence for the expulsion event that was held in the gold room. Uh, we assisted with vehicle, uh, traffic patrol and participated, and, uh, and with the, uh, participants entering the gold room, on, uh, the thirtieth of October, police were assigned to coordinate traffic and patrol for the shredding.
Attorney Chief Jackson, one, one second. I, I think I can hear Monday Night Football in the back. Uh, you mind turn that?
I'm sorry.
I know it's a good game tonight, uh, but I want people to hear your, your report, uh, and yeah, and it could be a brief report, because I know we've already gone through October, uh, so whatever you haven't gone through yet, um.
Okay, let me emphasize on that robbery that took place on, um, in the nine, in the ninety-one hundred block of Glenard Parkway. This citizen reported that he was approached by some suspects in a vehicle, and, uh, they demanded his money, gave him seven hundred dollars. Uh, there's no update on that particular incident, and like I had mentioned before, the county, uh, robbery detectives had reached out to Lieutenant Robinson and advised him that, uh, per further investigation, that incident did not occur within the city limits.
Thank you.
And then, um, back on November the second, there was a report of, uh, shots fired in the area of Hay Street and Johnson Avenue, and the officers responded to the location and didn't find any noticeable evidence while on the scene. The next day, on the third, a resident called. Hello?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, on the, excuse me, on the third, the next day, a resident called the police and to report that her vehicle was parked on Hay Street and had been damaged by two, uh, bullet holes on her drive and the passenger's side door, but we didn't get any other calls for any damaged vehicles in reference to that. And, uh, and then on November the sixteenth, the Prince George's County Police Auto Theft Carjacking Units executed a search warrant in the thirty-six hundred block of Jeff Road, and they were attempting to locate a sixteen-year-old female for carjacking and attempted murder, and she wasn't located at, on that particular day when they, uh, did the search warrant. And I'll have, and we'll not further update on that, on that particular incident at this time. And on November the nineteenth, I met with all the officers to advise them that our substation at the Woodmore Town Center has been revised, and process has been completed with furniture set up by five computers, printers, and everything is in operational now, and the guys can go in there and do their, uh, reports. That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, has there been any, any update? I know the, um, there was a robbery at the Costco, um, uh, where, you know, citizens were concerned about it, because they, they first heard about it on, I think, Neighbor Next Door. Uh, ha- has there been arrests made in, in that robbery?
Uh, we haven't been contacted by the Prince George's County Police in, in reference to that, unless they reached out to Lieutenant Robinson with any additional information, but at this time, I don't have any additional information to report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, and a report on the city manager report?
Let me find that. Only, um, received the email from, uh, Code Enforcement Officer Thomas advising that we had needed to be, um, to replace the, uh, two vehicles for our code enforcement. And he was, and he had suggested, uh, two mid-sized four-wheel, uh, drive SUVs. And I know there was, uh, concern about it, the grass growing at a house at seventy-nine oh two Toward Street, which was a vacant house, and I was advised by, uh, Public Works Supervisor Howard that the grass had been cut. And I met, uh, Code Enforcement Officer Thomas and advised him of, of some complaints that was addressed in a meeting earlier, and he advised me that he had taken care of those, um, him and Officer Thompson. They had told a vehicle, and this complaint was in reference to, um, McLean Avenue, uh, a vehicle that was parked with, uh, flat tires, and a vehicle that was parked that had, um, trash in it, that need, that should have been, uh, removed. And we made contact with the owner. And he advised that he was in the process of getting tags for the vehicle and that he would be taking that, those items away to the dumpster.
Okay. Taking the vehicles to the dumpster or?
Taking the 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 items that was on the truck to the dumpster.
Okay.
Yeah, the vehicle had uh, like two flat tires.
Okay, yeah. I didn't know it was a truck, so. Okay. Is that all?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Uh, next on the agenda, Mayor Cross, if there are any other high level items on the mayor report? I know that the citizens can read the 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 report, the full report in depth, uh, any other high level. Actions or items that you'd like to discuss?
Thank you, Council President, so I just wanted to make sure that the citizens are aware that we're looking at thirty sidewalks for ADA compliance. Uh, so Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, uh, prepping the resolution to support that with three B's as required by the council. Uh, over the course of this last month, we've supported uh. Upwards of about five hundred families from our um Turkey giveaways during Harvest Day Rewind to Giving Tuesday. To Oh Give Thanks, um presently, uh, the city did really well uh this season with taking care of citizens that needed a little extra helping. So I just wanted to put that out there and make sure that uh everyone that was a member in part and participant of that know how grateful we are in supporting. Our communities in such a great way. Uh, we're working with the American Legion uh on the Veterans Day service. Uh, we're also preparing to uh work their prayer service, which will be for the Martin Luther King come January. Uh, as we look at um. Chief O'Donnell, uh, we did a memorial service for him, but I wanted to bring back to citizens. Awareness that December the twenty third, the family would be pleased to have you come to Arlington National Cemetery. The time will be ten forty five AM, so no later than ten fifteen, they're asking everyone to be there. Uh, that way you can get appropriate parking and and walk in to the facility where he will be in turn, December twenty third for Chief Philip A. O'Donnell. Uh, Polar Express will be this weekend, December the eighteenth. And uh, this is an opportunity for us to, you know, watch our movie, have some fun, some spirited fun. Uh, we're inviting kids and families as a whole to come out, and this joyous opportunity will be from ten AM to two PM. Uh, and we will have a surprise visit from Santa, and uh you don't want to miss this, there's over uh. Three thousand dollars worth of gifts that will be given out at this event, so. Uh, we've had some really wonderful donators that, you know, really came in and and hit the ball out of the park on this one. Uh, we've got four HR actions that uh council you'll have in your box. Uh, we'll make sure that we put those back on top so that we can get those actions taken care of. Uh, for the fourth of December, for citizens that were not aware, the Martin Luther King site was demolished. Uh, the job is currently complete, the grounds have been cleared. Uh, we are working towards the council's recommendation towards uh putting a adult fitness area there in the back right corner. Uh, opposite of the children's playground for now, a gazebo will sit on the platform until it's decided what next to do. As far as building on that um foundation. Uh, as far as the uh climate action plan, uh, there is a countywide climate action plan that was taken. Into account the amount of carbon emissions and the goal is to reduce it by fifty percent. Uh, as we look at the city moving towards uh electric cars, I believe will be uh really suited well. Uh, to support this twenty thirty strategy uh that's going to be implemented in the Maryland twenty thirty greenhouse gas reduction plan. Uh, so this is a good news story uh for the city to be in line with uh where the state is going towards greenhouse reduction. Um, the final redistricting maps were pushed and voted on. Uh, for the most part, we were able to, based on our communication, based on feedback from across this, the city, as well as the. The district uh of the county, were able to get the maps um adequately pushed back to a place of. Uh, communal acceptance, if you will, by all parties involved during that, so I want to thank you all for all your letters, for your comments to the county council. Uh, it really made a difference, so thank you for your attention to that. Um, other than that. Just wanted to make sure you're aware that. We will submit for the council. Uh, the resolution for snow removal as we're heading into the winter months, we want to make sure. That we get our contract ready for that snow removal. And as far as the report that concludes any uh high level wave tops, um, ready to receive any questions as required.
Okay. Um. I would like to open the floor up to any questions from citizens as it relates to any of the. Uh, administrative reports, whether it be the uh financial report, chief's report, city manager's report, or the mayor's report. Okay. Thoughts in any hands related to the reports? We will move on uh to the next item on the agenda, which is topics of discussion. And there's only one under there, uh, since we tabled the in-person meeting proposal, and that is Public Works, uh, Councilman Gill.
Thank you, Council President, um, not going to take long on this, uh, wanted to just touch base on certain things. I look at the Public Works report and I see some things that were listed. But I do know unless something's changed, that I believe there are five staff members, I don't know if this is city manager who can answer that, or. Or is it the mayor? Who can answer that as far as Public Works employees?
There are five, you're correct, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, so just looking at what they listed as um on on the administrative report. And to me, it doesn't appear that. All the things that they listed here amounts to the hours that they work. And what I mean by that is, I mentioned this of over a week, oh, I'm sorry, over a month ago. Um, the speed humps need to be painted. The street lines also, the yeah, is when I say, and it's to be specific, I talked about Glen Arden Parkway between Seventh and Tenth Street. There's also, if you drive around, there's also Tyrol, there's also Jeff Roads. Um, and when I'm looking at the report, I see. Passed out flyers for this, passed out flyers for that, and I just think that. Public Works, there needs to be better usage of time, I don't know what they're doing, I have heard from citizens. That they see them hanging out but not doing work, so for me. I'm just concerned about that, but also want to get some clarity as to what timeline can we expect? For the speed humps to be painted and the lines, and I, and again, I'm speaking specifically about Glen Arden Parkway, Jeff Road, Tyrol. But if there are other streets, um, those should be covered as well, can we get some type of um a response as to a timeline?
And and just to add to that, that I was a victim of that this uh very weekend, heading to um Nunu's birthday party. Um, where driving a speed limit going twenty five miles per hour did not see the speed bump, and then that was not a pleasant uh ride for my car, so. Um, I I'm pretty sure that there are more occurrences of that, uh, at the very least down uh Glen Arden Parkway. Uh, but also checking on all of the speed bumps in the city, so Mayor Cross, if you could um. Talk on when that is expected to be rectified?
May I?
Go ahead.
May I comment?
Sure.
Yes, I've spoken to Howard about that, and I think he was in the process of getting some paint. And I just had asked him that just before he uh took leave. And uh, when he gets back, I'll. Uh, revisit that and find out when he, if he can give me an exact date when he will get that process taken care of.
Thank you.
Is he the only one that can do it?
I'm not sure, I know, I I I recall a conversation with him once, he said that he he did it. But I I don't know, I can check with Courtney tomorrow.
Okay.
And and just to provide some additional level of clarity, I'm a numbers person, so the reason why I ask these things, I guess, as far as how many employees do we have? I think we get, the employees get an hour lunch break, no? Is it an hour or half an hour, an hour?
It's, it equates to an hour, yes.
It's an hour, so if we give or take forty hours a week, take an hour out each day, that's thirty five hours a week. So thirty five hours uh for four weeks or a month, that's a hundred and forty hours worth of work for one employee. So if you multiply that times five, that's a lot of hours, right, and so I'm just trying to rationalize my head as to. Around what's taking so long to do something like this, when I'm reading the report, I see. Continue to sanitize the city hall building twice a day, assembly breakdown of meeting signage. Um, breakdown for city shred day, setup breakdown for city harvest rewind. You know, so pass out flyers, so I'm trying to understand all these hours, it can't, we we do have time, or there is, there should be time. Um, so please, if if we can just add that level of urgency to the public work staff. Um, for the citizens and for the cars that just keep getting demolished, that would be great. Um, if I may just quickly just say something else, I want to compliment, I don't know if it's the city manager or the mayor. Um, but I recently held an event at the Gold Room this past weekend, and the staff over there. Um, did a great job at waiting till we left and clean up and all that stuff, and so just wanted to say kudos to um the Gold Room staff. And um for citizens who haven't utilized the Gold Room in a long time, or even administration and legislative people. The Gold Room is a jewel and an asset, so um kudos if you can relate to your staff members that I was very pleased. Um, please, please, please do so. That's all.
Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President, thank you for that, Councilwoman Gill, we'll make sure that they're aware. Uh, now I'm looking at the uh Public Works projected goals, one of the things that. I've requested that they do is they're accomplished as well as they're projected, and I don't see painting as one of their projected, so. That may have gotten dropped off of the list of projections of things that need to get done. So we'll make sure that that is brought to light, and in fact, uh, we'll send an email tonight to make sure it's coordinated. Uh, but no, Howard isn't the only one that can do that, I mean, we do have Courtney and uh we do have Albert, and we have, you know, uh, the team that can do these, this work. Uh, it's just not on the projected goal, so I'm inclined to believe that that just got missed, so uh we'll make sure that gets done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Anything else, Councilman Gill?
No, that was it, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay, uh, also I wanted to bring to light also that citizens are also used to having um the uh city properties. That have lea, that have trees on them, that drop leaves, like at the corner of Johnson Avenue and uh Leslie. Uh, tho- those properties could be cleaned or should have been cleaned by now from uh the leaves that have dropped on on and at, in the curb around the street. Uh, there's leaves, uh piles of leaves that uh Public Works has normally gotten up in the past years, but. Uh, for some reason, uh, the city properties have not been addressed for that area, those areas. Of uh leaf dropping, I had also made a suggestion, maybe uh. The the second or third year I was on the council, that uh just as we citizens uh rake up leaves and put them in bags and set them out for Monday morning uh. Uh, yard waste, uh, the uh, the uh. Public Works could also break up some of those leaves, put them in the bag and set it out there for uh. The uh yard waste pickup, because not all residents use that, it's not like we would be doing something uh up and over and beyond. Uh, giving the uh trash company more than what we pay for, be uh, but uh, that's a suggestion as to uh. Getting rid of the leaves, they could just rake them up, put them in the bags, and then sit it at the curb. Uh, this weekend, as I was riding down Johnson, I had uh the opportunity to look at. Uh, the former mayor Smith's yard, he had about maybe ten fifteen bags out there of leaves, so uh. And that that property that I'm speaking of is right next to his home that has all these leaves, they could, they could do the same thing, uh, it's a suggestion. A win-win suggestion, in my opinion. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Miss, Miss President?
Councilman Harry?
Yes, that's on Public Works also, I just want to be sure that. Whoever do those speed humps do better than what was done to those trees in War Two. Um, I don't know who hacked those crate myrtles up in War Two, who did a terrible job on those things. And it seemed like somebody did it, whoever did it, did it, did a terrible job on it because they didn't want to do the job. So whoever's going to paint those speed humps, I hope they do a better job than what they did with those trees, because if they don't want to do it, and I've seen some of them. Employees do that, if they don't want to do it, they're gonna really not do a a very uh. Good job, and I think that needs to be addressed by the administration on. The performance and the duties that these employees do, and then make sure they do it. Um. In a professional manner. Not half, excuse, not halfway. You know, so. I just want to make sure it's done right, so.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Any other comments related to Public Works? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, I think with the crate myrtles, it might have been a a situation where they didn't know. Exactly how to do that, and they were told to do it, and they just did it, I I don't think they did that intentionally.
I I I think the issue with the crate myrtles, sorry, Miss President, may I, Miss President?
Yes, sir, Councilman Harry.
Issue with the crate myrtles was that they were hacked up with a machete versus units and tree printers. You know, a machete was not, the the tool recommended for that job. And I'm, and the person chose to use a machete, and that's why they look like they look in that section of the city. So I'm just saying, they need to take care and be responsible, and that's one thing that really drives me, that drives me crazy is that. You know, if you don't, if you don't want, if you don't want your property to look like that, don't make it, don't make the city of Glen Arden look like that. Take pride in what you do in the city of Glen Arden, you know, you're getting paid a paycheck, every job should be done with a monicum of professionalism and pride. When it comes down to the citizens in the city of Glen Arden and brothers in the city, because you don't live here, don't mean you should make the city look bad, and that's my, that's my feeling. You know, that's what you're getting paid for to make it look professional, make it look decent, make it, make it look like a beautiful place you want to live. Not because you're in some type of, you're angry or you're mad, or you're, you don't feel you're getting paid enough. That you don't want to do the job, if you feel you're not getting paid enough, leave and find something else, but you took the job at that salary. You know, do the job. So, I mean, it all came down to what they used, and they shouldn't have used what they used on our trees. Is that's twenty thousand dollars worth of trees that we put out there, and to hack them up like that was just ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. All right, uh, and with that, we will go to next item on agenda for um public comments. General comments, just open. Uh, now it's an opportunity to have your voices heard, any complaints, any um questions, concerns? You can still talk about, uh, if you have any, you know, questions about the mission reports. Anything at this time is your opportunity to make your voices heard, so. Any citizens' comments? Ms. Hunter? You're on mute. Um, Hunter? The show, do you know if you could unmute her?
It's saying ask to unmute, Miss. It's saying ask to unmute. Ms. Alida Hunter, can you unmute yourself?
Is there, is there any way you can? She's connecting to auto. Okay, now try to unmute yourself, Ms. Hunter. As an alternative, uh Councilwoman Jones, can you uh enable the chat box? And therefore, if she can't get it to to work, she could put her question in the chat box. Uh until uh we're able to get Ms. Hunter, I'll move forward to Ms. Crutchfield.
Hello, everyone. My question is this. So I hear a lot of, I guess, chatter about the maintenance people. Sound like, to me, I would think they they don't do their job. But however, I'm seeing, I think the city of Glen Arden is a beautiful place. That's just my take. And are they trained maintenance people? Are they, do you all have a maintenance staff that does the work? Are these guys supposed to do the buildings and the maintenance? I'm I'm just, I'm just asking. I'm I'm a little confused.
Mayor Cross?
Thank you, uh Citizen Crutchfield, for that question. So they are, our, our Public Works is not trained in landscaping. And that's one of the reasons why we want to actually procure a landscaper for the city. Uh and we've looked at Green Belt and we've looked at uh New Carrollton and some others who will make the proposal uh for a proper landscaper when it comes down to things like the crate murdles or grounds upkeep. But uh Public Works, for the most part, are for grass cutting, tree trimming, you know, uh just basic work for the city and also building maintenance. So uh if if we need to have some, you know, small projects done in the building, they can do it. Like we talked about, painting the lines on our city streets, they can do those things. Um that is what they're there for. Uh it's the beautification things that's ru- that we're running into trouble with. And that's one of those that we're gonna have to uh either get them trained, uh invest in getting them properly trained or invest in a contract uh with someone whose number one job that is for us. And 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 then put it on a regimented schedule.
I I thank you for that. And the reason I say that, I know as a board member for the HOA for Woodmore um condos, we have a landscaper and the landscaper takes care of the area. I would think these guys is to take care of the minute things in the city, not all the major aspects of the whole city of Glen Arden. I mean, that's just my take.
Thank you, uh Ms. Crutchfield. Uh Ms. Hunter, are you able to unmute yourself?
I am now. I don't know why. Hi, good evening. That happened last meeting too. I don't know why, but I had to leave and come back. Um so a couple of things I wanted to quickly touch on, um the King Site ground. Is there any estimate timeline for when uh a building or a building design is proposed to um be placed back or built back on that site? Um and if it is, is there, has anyone suggested what would be in the building? Um the other thing is the sidewalks again on Johnson Court. Um I I think it's in the works, but I didn't hear it mentioned this evening, so I'm bringing that up again. I don't want that to fall off the radar. The other thing is, I mentioned um a couple of meetings ago, questioning about the twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven tobacco shop. And I was told, I think by the chief of police, I'm not sure, if it was him, that um none of them should have been twenty-four seven and um it would be looked into. Well, clearly, the one that's on seven oh four directly across from the city hall is twenty-four seven. The other thing is um there was a situation where um a few neighbors um had a concern and reached out regarding um basically some neighbors just being very inconsiderate with how they park or their company parks or whatever. And um you know, the neighbors are really losing faith in the police of Glen Arden being able to come around, show their presence in police or answer calls when we call. So we pretty much just stop calling and just deal with stuff on our own or just suck it up or whatever. And that just shouldn't be. We pay our taxes, we live here, and we should not have to feel like, you know, if there's a concern, then we call and we should get some assistance, some help. And that doesn't seem to be happening. Also, the car that was um left on bricks on um couple of weeks ago, Glen Arden Parkway and Johnson Avenue. Um it was brought to our attention that there were four cars, at least four cars, that were hit that night in, on this side and Ward One, um because someone verified that because I that that was news to me. Um and I think that's all I have.
Uh I can, Chief Jackson, uh thank you, uh Ms. Hunter. Actually, Jackson, do you want to touch on uh the police presence and the uh cars on bricks?
Yeah, yeah, um I think it was a total of maybe two or three cars that had the tires uh taken off. I know it was one in the uh seventy-nine hundred block of uh Johnson Avenue and one in the seventy-eight hundred block of Glen Arden Parkway. And as far as Johnson Court, I put out uh email to the officers on the evening shift to uh give that area along with Hayes Street special attention. And uh and I've spoken to a young lady that lives in that area that I know. And she uh gave me some information on a house of uh in, on Johnson Court. When the lady is there, she has a lot of company. And um that's where the uh inconsideration comes in, where the people are blocking someone else's driveway. And then she was telling me about another house. Two houses up from this particular house where there's uh led some suspicious activity there too. So I asked her, has uh anyone called the police? And she said she don't. So I tried to uh encourage her, if you see some suspicious, call the police. Don't just let it go by and not say anything.
Chief Jackson, do you know of any preventative measures that citizens can take um to prevent, to stop, you know, robbers from coming and taking their wills? Is there um uh wheel locks or anything in, that you know of in in your line of profession that we should know as citizens to protect our property?
Well, I would say, you know, cars come equipped with alarms, but they they are not the alarms that like when someone uh bumps your car, something like that, set it off. Uh I would recommend those type of alarms be installed on the vehicles because they are better than the factory alarms. And also, uh these guys that are going throughout the county that's doing this, they're professionals. They they know how to uh get those wheels off, even if they have uh wheel locks.
According to reports, are there particular, is there a particular brand of car? Um you know, that are easier than some, is there some type of pattern or consistency as relates to model make?
Well, they they mainly uh hit uh Toyotas and Hondas. Honda Accords and To- and uh the Toyota Corollas.
Okay. All right. And as it relates.
They go after those sport rims, not the normal factory rims. They go after those uh high-priced uh tires and rims that you see on the uh sports cars.
Okay. And as it relates to the tobacco twenty-four hour shop?
Yeah, I had talked to Thomas about that. And according to him, uh I think the permit that they have says twenty-four hours. And I can talk to him more about that. But we've, we've spoke, I've spoken to him and I know he has. But um the language that's, I think, that's on their permit says it twenty-four hours.
Permit from the city?
I guess, I I I think the permit they got from the county.
Well, wouldn't they need also something from the city?
Yes, they would, but I don't know what's in writing. I'd have to speak with uh Thomas, the code enforcement officer.
Okay, can you check on that, please? Because uh um we've gotten a lot of complaints about that. And if we can step in to do anything uh to prevent that from happening, then, you know, I will support that.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And Mayor Cross, the um she also talked about the Johnson Court sidewalks. Is that in your plan for the um your thirty sidewalks that I believe you said some about thirty sidewalks? ADA compliance that need reconstruction or something like that?
Yes, that's correct. And thank you, um Citizen Hunter, for that inquiry. Um I did receive your communication. Johnson Court is a part of the thirty. Uh we will be pulling uh Glen Arden Parkway, McLean Street, um Wesley Street, Third, Fifth and Fourth Street, Reed Street, Irving Avenue and um some more against McLean and Glen Arden. So yes, we definitely have that included in the thirty.
Okay. Let's have to at least answer your questions.
Um may I speak?
Yes.
Okay, huh. Um so um uh Mayor Cross, thank you. Yes, I did answer my question. Um back to the chief with the comment from on Johnson Court, when the neighbor said um they don't call. Well, there's been so much stuff going on previously where where people were calling and nothing ever happened. So I mean, that's what's gonna happen. You just get to the point where why even call? Does anyone care? Um I'm glad you said that to the neighbor and um hopefully, hopefully going forward, we won't have to call. You know, I, my hope is that something is said to the neighbors, neighbor, to let them know, you know, the expectation um of, you know, just being a courteous neighbor. Um and then also with the, I don't know, I didn't hear anything about the King Site. I may.
I'm sorry, we overlooked that one.
Oh, um the the cars, again, back to the cars that were left on bricks, it's really concerning to me because my next door neighbor, they went to her house and took bricks and removed bricks from her yard to place some of those cars on bricks. That's a little too close for comfort. And um again, if you, you know, if the police say, you know, if you ask them to come through more, we're not seeing them. Um you know, we're we're not seeing them. It would be nice if we can know, like, okay, maybe around what time we should expect to see them. Like, is there overnight shift? Is there, is there even an overnight shift shift in Glen Arden? But we're not, we just do not have the police presence that we need um on this street and and right here in this this little area right here. We just don't. While we were talking just now, I heard what sound like gunfire, you know? I don't, I don't know if it was right here or, you know, further away, but you can't stop everything. Police can't stop everything. It can be everywhere, but your presence is greatly appreciated. We feel more comfortable when we see you, if you're just riding by, you know? But we're not seeing that, we're not getting that. But um yes, my questions were answered. Thank you. Oh, the twenty-four seven? Yeah, I I'm interested to hear about that too because if the county got it, the city had to sign off and agree with that. And I, I really have a problem with us having a twenty-four seven um tobacco store in Glen Arden. That's all I have.
Thank you. So two points of a follow-up, uh back to Chief Jackson. Also, I think I mentioned it la- last time, but you know, as we get into budget season around the corner, um you know, it would be good to look into license plates readers. Um I know others jurisdiction have them and some HOAs have invested in them to prevent things like this. Um and and what will happen is, if this happened at three o'clock in the morning, it's only two, so many entry points to Ward One. Um uh so wouldn't, you know, it's not like we have to have like ten of them or anything like that. But uh they will be able to read the license plates, uh if it's happening at particularly at three o'clock in the morning. And so we can easily catch whoever's doing these things uh and that people can kind of sleep uh a little better and breathe a little easier uh if we have some sort of um additional help uh uh outside of just officers patrol the street, something that can actually be preventative uh or at at least initially uh catch who's doing stuff like that. So maybe there's something to think about as uh you uh and the mayor get together to discuss some of the administrative items in the budget for FY twenty-three. Um and Mayor Cross, if you could just touch on briefly the uh the um King Site.
Okay, thank you. So relative to the King Site, at present, the only plans is for the adult fitness area there in the back right corner and the um portable gazebo on the foundation. So what we will have to do is uh work with the council uh to determine uh what layout we would actually uh want to present and have the citizens' voice. I think it's very critical that we have the citizens' voice on what type of facility they desire and what that facility should do uh for the community at large. Uh we know that the Martin Luther King Site had a very valuable presence in the community from sock hop, sock hop dances to uh education, uh communicate, community forums. Uh and even just the rec center where you can come, uh kids have a place to play and and commune together. So when it comes down to the moment of decision, uh expect that there will be a survey to citizens to ensure that we are providing the facility that gives the value to the community uh at large. So thank you for asking that question. Please stay uh ever vigilant, and I know you will, on what happens with the site. Uh but uh thank you for that. We, as of right now, a portable gazebo uh as we make a foundation plans for the future.
Thank you. Uh Mrs. Wilson?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. How are you doing?
I'm great. Um I am, um I have a question concerning the legislation that was voted on tonight. And my, my question is, was this um legislation presented to the citizens?
Yes.
Before it was voted on?
Yes, ma'am. It was posted online. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Citizens had an opportu- actually, what I should have said is, was there a hearing for this uh for the citizens? And and did you get citizens' comments on it? Because I don't recall at any point where this piece of legislation called for citizens' comments.
Correct. Um there weren't citizens' comments in the beginning. Um you can certainly speak on it now uh if you would like to.
Then my question to you is, what's the point of me commenting on it now when you all have already voted on it? That a legislation, excuse me, legislation should be uh presented to citizens and they should be able to comment on it prior to it being voted on. And, uh, if I remember correctly, I was present at the work session, which citizens did not have. Uh, they could not comment at a work session. So they could not comment on this piece of legislation. When you convened tonight, you immediately after, um, after you, you talked about uh, the agenda and all like that, you went on to this piece of legislation and you voted on it. So citizens still did not have an opportunity to comment on it before a vote was taken. So with that being said, you're not following what the, um, charter resolution says. With the charter resol- with the charter resolution, citizens are supposed to have an opportunity to, to hear the legislation and comment on it prior to it being voted on. So please do not continue this, um, way of doing things that you're doing it because you're not following the charter.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Uh, actually, for our past legislations, we've had citizens' comments before we voted on a piece of legislation. Uh, and this one, which I view different, was because it was already in the budget for us to have that piece of equipment. So there wasn't much of, uh, a citizen's comment that was warranted. Um, but you're welcome to speak with us now. If you disagree with it, um, feel free. But the, the notion that we have consistently not followed the charter and allows citizens' comments is false. This, actually, this was the one that.
Excuse me, Mr. Curtis. I did not, I did not say that you can simply do that.
Ms. Wilson, Ms. Point of order, Ms. Wilson. I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you speak and, and, and you, you're welcome to dispute me afterwards. I don't have a problem with you. I just want to finish my point. Uh, and if I'm wrong, then you could say that I'm wrong. I, I'll welcome that point. Um, but, uh, and if I put words in your mouth, I apologize, but I'll simply send, I, and I apologize, Ms. Wilson. I was simply saying that this was just a formality. There wasn't, uh, much of a big piece of legislation like we're building a new building or, uh, we're voting on how we're going to use the opera funds, which we were asked for citizens' comments. This was something that was in the budget for us to do, uh, and we're just moving forward with it. Um, so, um, but if you look at our other meetings for these other things like the opera funds and these other, uh, legislations, we actually have had citizens' comments before we voted on the legislations. So I didn't, I didn't want there to be a misunderstanding that this has been, uh, something we've just done all along. But you're, you're free to, to speak and correct me if I did say that you said something you didn't.
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you did put words in my mouth because I didn't say that all other legislation had been done that way. I said this piece of legislation, and if I remember correctly, that's what the charter resolution says, that all legislation, it doesn't say if it is in the budget, it doesn't say if it's not in the budget, then we, citizens have a comment on it. It says all legislation that comes for, that's gonna come for, for a vote. The citizens, it should be presented to the citizens prior and the citizens have an opportunity to comment on it. And I'm saying this piece of legislation that was passed tonight did not follow that procedure. And I, and I am requesting that you follow the, the, uh, charter resolution, follow the charter, because if, if it's supposed to be for all legislation, please let it be for all legislation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Now, now, did you have actu- did you actually have a comment related to the, the legislation?
My, I, I, my, I don't feel that my comment would be taken into consideration at this time. Nothing will be changed because you've already voted on it. So I just want to make it clear that me being a citizen, I do not appreciate legislation coming forth and me not being given the opportunity to comment on it if I so choose.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wilson. I, I appreciate that and definitely will take that into consideration moving forward.
Thank you. I want the whole council to take that into consideration.
And, yes, we will. Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Wilson? Mrs. Wilson, sorry.
Uh, no, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, without hearing anything, uh, just wanted to do one more thing. One, um, Christmas is actually next weekend, not the coming weekend, but the following weekend. So just wanted to, uh, tell everybody as they go Christmas shopping, stay safe. Uh, have a happy holidays with your family. And I actually want to do a consensus, uh, because, you know, I know technically this is a public hearing. Uh, so I don't know if we need one next week, uh, and wanted consensus to, um, if we don't have anything to meet for next week to actually, uh, break until, um, it will be January the third. Um, because according to our charter, it's not required that we have a, a public hearing next week. So wanted a consensus with the council as to, um, since we currently don't have anything bypassing and not having that public hearing, uh, and staying on schedule for our work session on January the third, which means that we'll have two weeks of no meetings. So, uh, I'll just go ahead. Uh, Councilman Hairston, uh, this is just consensus. We're not voting. This is just a consensus. Councilman Hairston.
This is the consensus to go on a break?
Yes, until our regularly scheduled, um, work session on January the third.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Harry? Uh, that was quick. I'm guessing that was.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
No.
Councilwoman Gill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Thank.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yes, thank.
Uh, oh, Councilman, Councilman Curtis, uh, I will say, yes. Um, there is a lot of work that we have to do, so I, yeah, I, I do want the, um, council to be aware that once we hit the ground in January, there's going to be a lot to do. But I do also want to respect the time that this is the season to be jolly, uh, and it's family. Uh, and there's a, um, you know, I want everyone to enjoy their time, be safe, have a, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, and, um, you know, be well rested because we will be doing a lot in the coming new year. Um, that's not to say that the council is not going to be working in his next two weeks. We're just not going, probably going to meet, um, publicly unless there's an emergency. So, uh, with that, to everyone, have a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Uh, we're still open, so if you have any questions, feel su- feel free to email the council or the mayor. We will respond, uh, and, uh, bless us to you and your family. With that, it is eight fifty-three.
That's the president, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilman Curtis? I'm sorry. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I just, I just want to wish everyone a, a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday and just be safe. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Ferguson, did you have anything to say?
Just wanted to say happy holidays and keep people safe also. Just be fresh.
I'll just do a round table. Councilman Hairston, any last words?
Have a holiday, stay safe.
Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, have a blessed Christmas, Merry Christmas and New Years, and remember that Jesus is the reason for the season. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gill?
Just wanted to echo what my, um, fellow colleagues mentioned. Happy holidays, Kwanzaa included and all. Be blessed and safe. Please be safe, healthy, safe, please.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Ferguson? Ah, we already went, sorry, but if you have anything else.
Be blessed again and stay safe, stay safe. Keep it for your family.
Uh, yeah, Captain, uh, Acting Chief Jackson?
I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy holidays and enjoy and, uh, look forward to being next year, see what the new year bring in for the city and everybody that's here.
And Mayor Cross?
Thank you. Everyone have a wonderful holiday season and we're here for you. Just give us a call. Uh, we'll be there for you. And also note that on the seventeenth, there's a three-hour early release. So, uh, if you're calling during that time, just make sure you know that there, uh, the phones will be on automated answer. But we look forward to seeing you in the new year. And if we can be of service during this holiday season, please do not hesitate to call.
Thank you. Yes, we're still open for business. Uh, with that, the time is eight fifty-five and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.